6:00 PM, Madam City Clerk, are we ready?
Mayor, we are ready. We're recording. May I begin?
Please.
The regular City Council meeting of September 6th is being held with a quorum of City of Westlake Council physically in attendance at the Westlake Council Chambers, 4005 Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. Public comments may be accepted prior to the meeting utilizing the electronic comment card available on the city's website. Public comments are also permitted at the appropriate time, and the mayor will call for such during the public comment section. And you may participate at this time utilizing the system's virtual hand feature and waiting to be acknowledged. Please note this meeting is being recorded both voice and video, and to remember your mic may be live. I will mute any microphones that carry any feedback or interruptions. If you are a caller that has been muted, and you may unmute yourself by pressing star six. Any person in the virtual meeting causing disruption or being inappropriate will be removed from the meeting. If I may also remind those physically in attendance, please utilize microphones so that the virtual audience and a clear recording of the meeting is produced. Thank you, Mayor O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Good evening all. Thank you for being here, and both in person and virtually. I'm going to call to order the City Council Regular Meeting and First Budget Hearing Meeting, September 6, 2022, at 6:01 PM. May I have a roll call?
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Present.
Councilwoman Pilar Vayuron.
Present.
Vice Mayor Greg Langowski.
Present.
Mayor John Paul O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please all join me for the pledge and stand. At the age of 20, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Additions, deletions, or modifications. I believe we have one minor modification. New business, A and B. There's a slight typo. It says this site is located at the southwest corner of Persimmon Boulevard in Ilex Way. It's actually the southeast corner of Persimmon Boulevard in Ilex Way. I would ask for a motion to amend the agenda to reflect that change.
Motion to agenda amend, uh, to reflect...
To amend the agenda to reflect that change in spelling.
To reflect amendment to change the spelling.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Vayuron to amend the agenda, seconded by Councilwoman Martinez. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vayuron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vayuron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Public comments and requests.
Mayor, we receive no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hands. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand and wait to be called on by the mayor. You will have three minutes. If you're a caller that has been muted, please press star six. Mayor, we have no comments.
Thank you. Consent agenda. This section of the agenda consists of routine or administrative items that require final approval by the City Council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless a council member requests such, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Vayuron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving forward, First Budget Hearing. Item A, Resolution 2022-22, Approval of Proposed Millage Rate for Fiscal Year 2023 Submitted by Finance. Do you have a presentation?
No, just the budget that's in the package for you, sir, other than the recommendation for the 5.125 mills, which is what the budget currently is based upon.
Okay.
Some housekeeping before we get started, Mr. Mayor. Since this is our fifth year, going past our fifth year of levying non-advalorm taxes, the vote of the council tonight, in order to have something other than the rollback rate, has to either be, if it's a simple majority, the maximum rate would be 4.159. If it's a two-thirds majority, it would be 4.575. It would have to be a unanimous vote to be anything above that. Otherwise, it would roll back to the rollback rate of 3.91.
Glad you brought that up. Before I start talking about what I want to happen, do we have any discussion from the council regarding the budget and the military?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Sure.
Respectfully, would you ask for a public hearing to be open prior to your discussion?
I will ask for a public hearing to be open prior to discussion. Do I need a motion?
No, sir. You can open it.
Mayor, we receive no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand or mute their device, stating their name and address. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you're a caller that has been muted, please press star six. Mayor, we have no public comments.
I definitely have some thoughts and feelings on this, and I'm gonna state them, but I don't know if I should reserve them until afterwards, or if you'd like me to just go ahead to see where my head's at.
Yeah, Tara.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
All right, so we've had this millage rate set at 5.125 since inception. The truth is, we really don't have any business lowering it to any extreme degree yet, because we're still stopgap funded by the developer. That's the issue we have. Also, I would be asking to find a way to lower it even greater. What I would very much like to do, considering it's, is more of a symbolic gesture, and shave that fraction off the end of the military. Go from 5.125 to 5.1. Doesn't, it doesn't change anything drastically. But what it does is it signals to our citizens and it signals to our constituents that in a world where everything around us is going up, you know, inflation is at almost 9%, cost of materials and copper is three times what it was just a couple years ago. We're not only holding strong, but we're doing what we can now. And next year, when we have some commercial, I'm gonna ask to go even more. You know, the 17,000 rooftops that surround us are all getting hit with major tax assessments, not Westlake, around Westlake. Taxes are going up drastically. I'd like to signal to the county and the world that we are doing what we can. We have our constituents' backs. I did, I've done the math. The change in developer contribution, and this was a couple months ago, I don't know if we can get a current date, but a couple months ago, it was less than $15,000. We're not talking about an insane amount. And I would even challenge staff to, throughout the year, sharpen their pencil and make that 15,000 up, so it ends up being wash. But if this becomes the one and only vote that I lose on the dais, I'll be proud to lose this one vote thus far, and from being councilman, vice mayor to mayor, because this is one that I feel so incredibly strongly about. Not to mention, all of you will get to say that you lowered taxes in the first year on this bench. So, so, Congress. So, we're looking, as we do 5.1, we're only looking at about a $15,000 change.
That's correct.
And we still have, we still have the developer behind us.
Correct. What would occur is that line item in the budget, the developer contribution, would increase by about $15,000, $14,005 and some change.
I know instinct is to be concerned with ruffling the feathers of the developer, who has been extremely generous and kind. But I think it's time to fluff the feathers of our constituents and our voters, the ones who put us in this seat. Show that we're doing what we can now, and then we'll do even more next year when we can. And by next year, we won't have the developer contribution even factor in.
Correct. Do we know how much this would affect residents?
It's not much. Help coffee.
I think it's, um...
It's more symbolic.
It's, it's about $10 a year difference.
Right, because the county just lowered their taxes, but it was only like $30 a year that the residents were saving. So, like, it sounds great, we can say we lowered taxes, but at the end, it's $15,000 if you use towards something else. I know it sounds great on paper, but in reality, when you look at the number, to each single household, not much of a difference, but $15,000 to the whole city, that's...
Stand. But what you have is you, and I, and you guys don't get all these concerns and emails and questions, what you have is so many residents that are concerned with runaway taxes, that moved here from our state and living areas, and moved here from places where it just went up, and up, and up, and up. The rollback rate exists for a reason, and I'm not saying we need to go anywhere near the rollback rate. But what we need to be able to do is say, look, we're not gonna raise them. Not. Holding strong just isn't good enough anymore. We need to do what we can, and if we can shave a fraction off today, without it being the end of the world, which I don't think it is, you know, it shows in our hearts and our minds, and we are that responsible stewards of our residents' tax dollars, we'll show them that we're that responsible and steward of our tax, and they're our tax dollars as well, that we'll do what we can today, and we'll do more next year, and more the year after.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, if I might, just remind you and members of the council, this is your proposed millage rate. You're gonna have another hearing on it, so whatever action you take tonight will not be final.
Okay.
You've got a second hearing on the millage rate and the budget coming up. This is your proposed millage rate. First meeting required by the statute.
Did I read, I'm sorry, did I read that we have an agreement to stay at a 5.125 for a designated...
The original incorporation, conversion and incorporation stated for a 5.125 millage rate for the duration of the planning period, which was a five-year period. We're approaching the end of that five-year period. So, depending, and that was set that way because depending upon the development, what commercial, what the values were, that 5.125 would cover the expenses without an issue.
So, the five-year period is the end of 2022 or 2023?
Would be this, this current budget would be the...
This current budget.
We can go to 5.1.
You could go to 5.1. Again, it's based upon our current growth, current forecast and stuff. We should be pretty good this year. By next year, we should be break even or better. But depending on worst-case scenario, which is what I have to plan for, that's why I'd recommend the budget at the 5.125. I do not see the reduction to the 5.1, the $15,000 change, as a substantial impact to us being able to accomplish the tasks that are set before us.
Second question, is there any line item, other than deferring it to the developer, is there any, and I know we've looked at this, way we can reduce $15,000 off of...
So, I'm sure that there is, but it wouldn't work that way. Because we can't, you know, if we reduce the line item, millage rate stays the same. It's just the developer ends up paying less.
Okay.
You know, and... Correct.
So, this would be the only way to literally make history today, and lower the millage rate for the first time in the history of the city. Probably be the only municipality in the county to actually lower the millage rate. I really, really hope to have the support of my colleagues on this. I'm gonna ask for a motion, and if I don't get it, I'm gonna pass the gavel and I'm gonna make the motion myself.
Mayor, if, Mayor, Mayor, if I may, we received a public comment card from Tara Dewey on behalf of Minto PBLH.
Sure.
Good evening. Tara Dewey, Louis Longman Walker on behalf of Minto PBLH LLC, and specifically, oh, I left my pen up here, John Carter. I just wanted to let it be known that Mr. Carter is in support of the mayor's proposal, and he just wanted, Minto wanted you all to know that he's fully supportive of that direction. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
He even has our back.
That makes a big difference, knowing that the developer who's helping, you know, pay the gavel backs it. So, in that situation, I feel a lot better about it.
That just shows, that just shows who we have.
Yeah.
How great and heartening we have here.
I really appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. Well, do we have to do public comment first? Or...
We had it.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce our millage rate to 5.1.
A nice second.
We have a motion to lower the millage rate to 5.1 by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Vayuron. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vayuron.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, adopting the proposed advalorm millage rate to be levied for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, providing severability, conflicts, and an effective date. So, you would have to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, please.
Make motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made the motion. And who seconded?
Both of us.
Motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Martinez. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vayuron.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations.
Excuse me, Mayor, if we could, Ken, can you make the public announcements, if you would?
Yes, the public announcement is that the council has voted for a 5.121 mills assessment this year, and Stephen will have to calculate the percentage of rollback above the rollback rate.
We need to announce that.
All right. Steve, are you there?
I know who's supposed to be...
Sam.
Yes, Sam.
Yes. What's the percentage above rollback rate for a 5.1 mills?
5.1 mill is 130.14% of rollback. 130.14.
Thank you, sir.
And also to conclude the public announcements required by the statute, there will be a public meeting to consider the final millage rate to be held at 6:00 PM on the 19th day of September in the Westlake Community Center, City Council Chambers.
Okay.
We conclude that item, Mr. Mayor.
Fantastic. Thank you. Moving on to item B. Resolution 2022-23, Adoption of Tentative Budget for Fiscal Year 2023. Read by title?
Yes, sir. Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, excuse me, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023. Determining fixing the amounts necessary to carry on the government and the city for the ensuing year. Determine the amount of applicable funds on hand. Provide for severability, conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Excellent. Now, is this already open for public hearing, or we need to...
You need to open for public...
Let's go ahead and open for public hearing and call for public comment.
Mayor, we receive no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand. If you're a caller that has been muted, please press star six to speak. Please state your name and your address. We have no comments, Mayor.
Excellent. So, this is to adopt the tentative budget. Ken, do you have...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a clarification and reiteration to the fact that the only change will show in the developer contribution of an increase of roughly $15,480. All the rest of the line items would remain the same.
Thank you, Minto, for your contribution. I get a motion.
Motion to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 2023.
By adopting the resolution.
Was it...
By adopting the resolution, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vayuron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you all for your leadership. Moving forward, we have presentations and proclamations. We have two that I am extremely happy to make and proud to make. First one was sponsored by Vice Mayor Langowski. This is for Patriots Day. A day of remembrance of the lives lost and those who made the ultimate sacrifice in their years that follow to protect and serve. City of Westlake, Florida. Whereas 21 years ago, on September 11, 2001, America was suddenly and brutally attacked by terrorists, and thousands of innocent Americans were killed and injured as a result of these attacks, including the passengers and crew of four aircrafts, workers in the World Trade Center, and in the Pentagon, rescue workers and bystanders. And whereas, in the spirit that moved rescue workers and firefighters to charge into darkness and danger, that September morning, our nation was united to stand strong and show its resilience in the face of tragedy. The enemy attempted to tear the fabric of our society by destroying our buildings and murdering our innocents, but our strength did not and will not waver. And whereas, on this anniversary, all citizens of Westlake are urged to observe a moment of silence to honor those who were lost as a result of these attacks, and are encouraged to thank our nation's incredible service members and first responders, many of whom are on the front lines of our fight against terrorism. We will always remember the sacrifices made in defense of our people, our country, and our freedom. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, does hereby proclaim September 11 as a day of remembrance, to honor those no longer with us, to give thanks to our first responders for all they have done and continue to do, and to rededicate ourselves to the ideals that define our country and unite us as one. I'd love that. I'm gonna sign it right now. Fantastic. Proclamation number two. A day of recognition and remembrance of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America. September 17, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. I, John Paul O'Connor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Westlake, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17, the 23rd, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Hallelujah. Signing this one now, too. Those are probably the two most important proclamations I've made so far, and probably ever will. Thank you. All right, moving on to the public hearing. Second reading, Ordinance 2022-08, Nonconforming Lots and Uses Submitted by P&amp;Z. Do we have a presentation?
Good evening. For the record, Osneel Leon, planner with the City of Westlake. Before you, the second reading approving ordinance number 2022-08 on nonconforming lots, uses, and structures. This item came before you on August 2, and this, for first reading, and this will be the second reading and adoption. Nothing has changed from the first reading. Staff does recommend approval. And be able to answer any questions. If you'll let me to close the presentation again, I can do as well.
I remember this presentation. Does, do we have any comments from the public?
Mayor, we have one from Catherine Rossmel.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening. Catherine Rossmel, from Louis Longman Walker, here on behalf of Minto PBLH LLC. Just like to offer a friendly amendment to this, just for clarification, not really a change in substance. If y'all would humor me and look at Section 2 of the ordinance before you, if you'll see, the title of that says that it is for nonconforming, single-family lots of record, and it says section discussing that topic. I would simply like to add a few words into that ordinance so that it's clear that this ordinance section applies to single-family lots of record. So, my request would be you change Section 2 to read any lot, sorry, any single-family residential lot or parcel of record prior to the adoption of an amendment to the city's code of ordinances that does not thereafter meet the requirements of the city's code for lot area or lot width. May nevertheless be utilized for single-family residence purposes only, provided that the lot area and lot width are within two-thirds of that required by the terms and regulations. So, that's identical to what's there, except for the insertion of the words "single-family residential" after any at the very beginning of the sentence. Thank you.
I'm sorry for clarification. You could identify the line in the ordinance.
Yes, it is line one on page 91 of your packet. Yeah, and the one that I have...
Page two.
Page two, line one.
Line one.
So, where it says, "Any lot or parcel?"
Single family.
Any single-family residential lot or parcel.
Can I have a motion to make that change?
Motion to approve that change.
Taken.
I'm sorry, can we have the city attorney read into record?
With the amendment?
The ordinance.
Well, respectfully, can we close the public hearing first? Any other comments?
Mayor, we have no other comments.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Then, if there's any discussion or amendment.
Any discussions on this item?
It's just a word change, right?
Just a word change. Discussions.
So, you undertake a motion to amend?
We have a motion, and we have a second to add family into the resolution.
Okay. We'll take the roll call, then I'll introduce the ordinance.
Can I confirm who made the motion?
Vice Mayor Langowski made the motion and?
Taken.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Thank you. Motion made by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Vailleron. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance by title only and ordinance to City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, amended code of ordinances by creating a section to be determined entitled "Nonconforming Lots, Uses and Structures", providing for regulations for lots, uses, structures lawfully existing in the time of amendment to the city's code of ordinances and thereafter deemed nonconforming. Providing for conification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve that amendment.
Motion to approve. Ordinance 2022-08.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Vailleron, seconded by Vice Mayor Langowski. Sec, uh, roll call, Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item B. Ordinance 2022-09. Granting Florida Public Utilities a non-exclusive franchise. Let's open up for public comment on this item.
Mayor, receive no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand. If you're a caller that has been muted, you may press star six. State your name and your address. You have three minutes. Mayor, we have no comments.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Do we have a presentation on this item?
No, no presentation, just a second reading. This is a culmination of about two years of negotiations back and forth between attorneys to get it in place.
Excellent.
And as soon as this is in, and as soon as this is in, then we can start receiving some extra revenue, which will make up for the $15,000.
There you go. How easy that works.
Yes.
For the second reading ordinance 2022-09. Granting Florida Public Utilities a non-exclusive franchise.
Second.
Ordinance by title only and ordinance granting Florida Public Utilities Company its successors and assigns a non-exclusive franchise for a period of 30 years to sell, distribute, transport and transmit natural manufactured mixed gas in the City of Westlake, Florida. Prescribing the terms and conditions under which said franchise may be exercised. Making findings, providing for severability, providing for an effective date and upon final passage.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Moving on to new business. These are the recommendations from our very astute LPA. Man planning. Item A.
Excuse me. Then we have additional items.
We have C and D.
We have resolutions. Resolution 2022-26 regarding solid waste services.
That's out of order on my, on my page here. All right, so let's see.
C is residential solid waste.
So we're on C.
Council, you should have an amended agenda up there.
Here we are. All right, moving on to C.
Resolution by title only. Resolution, the City of Westlake, Florida, relating to the provision of residential solid waste services in the City of Westlake, Florida, approving the assessment rate for residential solid waste services for the fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2022, imposing a residential solid waste services special assessment against assessed property located within the City of Westlake for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Ken?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this basically, we have to each year do the resolution to redo the assessment for the solid waste, which is the $280 and I think 60 cents.
And just for the record, it is a penny to penny pass through to the residents.
Correct.
Excuse me, sir, if you'd open a public hearing.
Open to public hearing. Let's call for public comment regarding solid waste.
Mayor, receive no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hands or mute their device. Please state your name and address. If you're a caller that's been muted, please press star six to speak. Mayor, we have no comments.
No public comment. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution 2022-26.
Motion to approve resolution 2022/26?
Second.
I'm sorry, can we confirm who made the second?
Motion by Councilwoman Martinez.
Motion by Councilwoman Vailleron, seconded by Councilwoman Martinez. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Next, we have item D, which is a resolution for the plat of woodlands of Westlake, submitted by Andrew Meering. Let's open up for public comment.
Mayor, receive no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hands. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you've been muted, please press star six. Mayor, we have no comments.
Do we have a staff presentation on this or a presentation by anyone?
It's in your supplemental package.
Good evening. For the record, Donaldson Hearing here tonight on behalf of Minto PBLH LLC and glad to be here. This is a request to make a minor modification to the plat for parcel R2 here in Westlake. I think it's my clicker on. Get the clicker to advance your point.
She's, she's well initiated on this screen.
Well, there you go. There we go. Thank you so much. So you approved the original plat for parcel R2 in February of 2022 of this year. That particular plat contained 170, 149, 75 by 150-foot lots. Recognizing some changes in the market, we wanted to introduce some additional diversity into that parcel. So we've incorporated 106 65-foot by 150-foot lots, retaining 58 75 by 150-foot lots. So it's an increase of 15 dwelling units. Most of the site plan remain the same. Parcel R2, as you're aware, is just located to the east of the, of the meadows. The original site plan is, is on your screen. These are 149 estate lots, very similar to what we're building in the estates in parcel T. And this is what we are proposing to modify with the, with the plat. We're incorporating some very large 65 by 150-foot lots together with 58 75-foot lots. The lakes remain the same. The roadways remain the same. The open spaces and landscaping remains the same. It's just introducing some additional diversity to respond to changes that we see in the market trends. So we're very excited about this. Your staff has approved this site plan. What's before you this evening is the technical plat, which generally the acreage remained the same. No changes in acres. It's just a change in the number of lots and the sizes of lots that we are proposing, all consistent with the provisions of your code. Your staff has found that the plat is in full compliance with the requirements of the Florida statutes and therefore is recommending approval. Of course, the plat is just a technical document, but just showing you what that is for your reference. So we would respectfully request your approval of the plat. More than happy to answer any questions. We are under land development with this parcel. So this is like the roads remain the same. It's really just a change in the, the way we're mixing up the lots.
Done. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, this is on the agenda next week for SIDS approval. Some of these changes that are there are not only that, but we had some, I won't say issues, but some ironing out of utilities and where locations were. So some of these are also kind of a combination between market and necessity for utilities. But it is expected to be approved next week at the SIDS meeting.
So you don't see any reason we need to table?
I see no reason to table it.
I have one quick question. Since we're going some different sized lots, will the collection of homes change at all?
The collection of homes will remain the same. You know, I, I know that there's some thought processes that are out there. We're introducing a couple of new models within, within the existing model park. But at this point, these would remain the same and same models that we're building in the estates for the 75-foot lots. They're just exercise. We, we do know from what we've seen from, from market is that, you know, particularly with COVID, people like these larger, deeper lots. So it provides a little bit additional diversity and market separation between our other communities, between orchards and, and what we're, you know, going to be doing here at, at Woodlands.
New models in that connect, in that collection. Any other questions from council?
No.
No.
On that note, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution for plat of Woodlands of Westlake.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Martinez. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward. The new business. A, first reading CPA 2022-01. Do we have a presentation? Let's read by title.
Ordinance number 22. 2022-10. By title only. Ordinance to City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, specifically amending portion of City of Westlake future land use map with a small-scale amendment changing the future land use designation from civic category to downtown mixed-use category on property designated as POD PC-2. More particularly described herein containing 9.137 acres. More or less provide for conflict severability and effective date.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Osnealeon Planner for the City of Westlake. Before you is a proposed small-scale future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation on a 9.13 acre site from civic to downtown mixed-use designation. The site is located at the southeast corner of Precipal Boulevard and Alex Way. Again, this is the existing future land use map amendment. The site is currently future land use of civic with the zoning designation of civic. The proposed future land use map amendment shown on the slide is for a downtown mixed-use designation and zoning of mixed-use. According to the Florida statutes of 163.3187, a small-scale development amendment may be developed under the following conditions. The proposed amendment involves a use of 50 acres or less and the proposed amendment does not involve a tax change to the goals, policies and objectives of the local government's comp plan, but only proposes a land use change to the future land use map for a site-specific small-scale development activity. And again, this application does meet these criteria. The current civic designation as part of the comp plan policy of future land use 1.1.14 civic allows the following uses: religious, meeting halls, exhibition and conference centers, education uses, recreational, conservation, and it has a non-residential intensity of a maximum 1.5 FAR. The proposed downtown mixed-use designation as part of policy 1.1.15 allows uses such as commercial, residential, single-family, multifamily, light industrial and institutional assisted living facilities, continuing care facilities, and all the uses that are allowed under the civic. It also allows a minimum grass density of four units per grass acre and the maximum grass, grass density of 16 dwelling units per grass acre. Bonus densities may be granted up to eight additional units per acre for senior workforce housing or affordable housing consistent with the policy of the future land use 1.2.4. It also allows for a non-residential intensity maximum of 3.0 FAR. The downtown mixed-use destination also allows a mix of uses to apply to a total area category within the cities. And here's a table from the comp plan allowing residential, commercial and the percentages. The staff has reviewed for compatibility. Adjacent existing land uses shows that the proposed land use is compatible with the adjacent properties. To the north, south and east are single-family residents with city future land use destinations of residential R2. To the west is the Wellington Medical Center with city future land use destination of downtown mixed-use. The existing development and future land use destination of the surrounding properties show that the proposed downtown mixed-use destination is compatible with the surrounding area since the destination is a continuation of the future land use destination of the property to the west as well as with the developed character of the area. The subject future land use map change against a small-scale amendment and any future, future or any proposed development shall comply with the adopted level of services be also approved by city council. Again, it has to comply with solid waste, wastewater, wastewater, use water, drainage, all these policies in the comp plan. Consistency with the comp plan, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comp plan. Objectives of the future land use 1.6 ensure compatibility among various land uses while promoting mixed-use economic development and multimodal transportation as well as all the policies under this objective. Again, more policies that support this amendment. The proposal is consistent with the provision of, again, chapter 163.3184 and 163.3187 of the Florida statutes concerning the processing of a small-scale future land use amendment to the comp plan. The small-scale official lines amendment to the comp plan is compatible with adjacent land uses and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. Staff does recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, City Council. Tara Dewey on behalf of Minto PBLH LLC. I won't belabor the points that I made earlier in the evening at the LPA hearing on the comprehensive plan amendment before you. However, I would request that the presentation we have prepared, which I have provided to the city clerk, be made of the, made part of the record for the hearing. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. As you heard, the application is fully compliant with all relevant laws, the comprehensive plan and the city's code.
Thank you, Tara. So, city attorney, does that require a motion to make that LPA?
No, sir. You've got the recommendations, part of the record.
Excellent. Any comments from the?
Question. Will this be coming back next month for the second? Okay.
Toward that, if I might, Mr. Mayor. Toward that end, this is the first reading. The next reading will be a public hearing. It will be quasi-judicial on the zoning, not, not the comp plan amendment. At that time, you'll be required to, but on the record, any conversations, ex parte communications you've had.
Excellent.
So tonight, there's no public hearing. These are first readings, both companion cases. Next month, you'll have a quasi-judicial on the rezoning.
Fantastic. Looking forward to the additional, the additional taxable land. Looking forward to the additional, the additional taxable land. That said, can I get a motion to adopt?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the first reading of CPA dash twenty twenty-two dash oh one, future land use map amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Leonard, seconded by Councilwoman Vailleron. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B. Or was that item B? No, this is item B. Application of NTO PBLH LLC requesting zoning change from civic zoning district to the mixed use zoning district.
Sir, if I might introduce stewardess.
Please.
Ornance number twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash eleven. Ornance of City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving the rezoning of property consisting of approximately nine point one three seven acre gross acres in size. For the parcel referred to as pod PC dash two, from civic dis- district to mixed use district, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
City attorney.
Okay, there we go. For the record, uh, Osne Leon with the city uh, Westlake. Uh, before you is the concurrent application along with the comp plan that you just heard. Uh, is the rezoning request, um, requesting a zoning change from civic to zoning district to the mixed use zoning district. Again, the site is located at the southeast corner of Preciman Boulevard and Alex Way. This is the existing zoning map. Uh, the parcel PC two. Uh, has a future line use destination of civic and a zoning district of civic. The proposal is a mixed use zoning district as well as a future line use destination of downtown mixed use. The zoning code allows um, the following uh, uses under the civic uh, zoning district. Uh, it allows religious, educational uses as well as civic uses with a non-residential maximum FAR one point five. Versus a proposed mixed use district which allows uh, residential, single and multifamily. All the uses allow under the civic district as well as recreational, commercial, medical, sexual, rented business, light industrial. And it has a non-residential use uh, maximum FAR of three point zero. Again, no site plan has been submitted as part of this application. Uh, once the city receives a site plan application for the subject site, it will be reviewed for compliance. With the development regulations under chapter three, zoning districts and standards. And it will be, need to be approved by city council. The requested mixed use zoning district allows a maximum gross density of four units per acre. The maximum gross density is sixteen dwelling units per acre and a maximum of three point zero FAR. This is consistent with the proposed of downtown mixed use future line use designation. That allows a maximum gross density of four units per gross acre and a maximum gross density of sixteen dwelling units per gross acre and a maximum FAR of three point zero. The proposed zoning district is compatible with the existing single family residential uses to the north, south and east. As well as the existing development to the west. And again, any future development would be reviewed for traffic impacts as well, uh, would be required to provide a traffic study. And the application will need to be approved by city council. And the staff does recommend approval of uh, the zoning change. Um, I'll be able to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is part B.
Tara Dewey, Louis Solomon Walker, on behalf of NTO PBLH LLC. I would just ask that my presentation from the LPA being, that has been provided to the clerk be included in the record. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Questions, comments from council?
What's a sexual oriented business?
Assume that would be some kind of, well. Let me not be associated. Can some of them say?
Tara, is that?
Please.
It was on the.
It was on the presentation.
It was the last bullet or second.
Uh, I would have to look at your permitted uses schedule in your chapter three of your LDRs, but I don't believe that that's a permitted use. If it is in there, I think it would be either a conditional use or something else, but I'll let your planning director.
That'd be a.
I was gonna say like, we don't, there's certain things we don't want, obviously, so.
Yes, well, this is uh, chapter three of your zoning. Chapter three of yours, of our zoning code has a table of all the permitted uses and conditional uses. So in this slide are showing the, these are the uses that you are allowed now civic district. And these are the uses on the mixed use. Anywhere on the mixed use district, you, these are allowed uses. However, some of those uses are permitted by right and others are conditional uses. So, but they are allowed under the.
Address the sexual oriented business.
Yes, I can, I can specifically address that.
Is it permitted?
Per uh, actually per uh, federal law, every municipality must allow one area on the zoning uh, district. That should permit is usually is adult, um, you know, adult uh, type of uses. So yes, that's, that's part of the federal law. Every municipality must allow an area on the zoning district.
So just because we approve this lot for that doesn't mean that'll be the site that they can do that, the one site in the city.
It's all of the mixed use.
Right, but she's saying only one needs to be approved in the city, you just said.
Excuse me?
What?
No.
No, I did not say that.
The, the federal law states that.
The federal law says that every municipality needs to provide a side, an area on your zoning. Uh, that must be, uh, that must be able to accommodate.
Ms. Mayor, with all due respect to the planner, I'll, I'll address the legal issue as to the federal cases. Uh, I have litigated this issue extensively. It is, um, the representation is that is accurate. Municipalities under case law have extreme difficulty in prohibiting. Uses of this nature. They're recognized as an expression of First Amendment rights. So municipalities, and we will look at chapter three and get back to you.
Thank you.
Cause I can't answer its conditional use or permitted use, but I'll take a look at it. But we will have to maybe also take a look at where you would want such a use to be allowed.
Correct.
In the city. You may want to revisit it, put it in a different portion.
Please do.
Isolate. I mean, but you do need to allow for it. You can't have uh, just a standard prohibition.
By the solar panels or anything.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
But, but that, but respectfully, it also needs to be coordinated with the plant, city planner. So you have a legal basis for determining an area where you can allow such a business. It's a, you may not like. The, the content of the business, but it's a legally recognized business that you can regulate. But you've got to be very careful in how you do it.
Yes, by the time we were preparing the zoning code, we took a lot of time to think where can this be located? Most municipalities, they have an industrial zoning district. We do not. Uh, the city of Westlake does not have is an industrial zoning district. So we have very few options to where we can locate this type of uses. So basically we have mixed use, we have medical use, we have downtown and we have residential. Those are our choices. And then uh, at the time, we put it there and it's a conditional use.
So one question, just what kind of business will be sexual and?
Yes, when you drive around Palm Beach County, you can see in many places, uh, videos, um, outfits. It's everywhere.
Doesn't mean it's common.
Okay.
So let's not, like, just. All right, let's not get the headlines.
Respectfully, I would ask.
We'll readdress it.
Not to emphasize discussion tonight on this, because there are ways to address it that, that have been successful. I won't go into it right now.
Fair enough.
But uh.
Got it.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ZC two zero two two dash zero one.
A second.
Motion in a second, Madam Clerk.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item C. First amendment to agreement between the city of Westlake and Nova Engineering.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, they've been under contract with us as uh, NZ Consulting and uh. Jen Moore, sorry about that. Uh, from the beginning, uh, they have not had a rate increase since twenty sixteen.
We're talking about Nova?
Nova, yes. So the, the rate increase that's proposed before you is the first one since twenty, since we started with them.
Mr. Mayor, I could introduce the resolution?
Please.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, by title only. Resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving authorized and proper city council member. To execute a First Amendment to agree between the city of Westlake and Nova Engineering Environmental LLC. Provide for conflict severability and providing for an effective date.
Council comments.
Yes, I do. Uh, I'll bring something up. Um, what's, what's the percentage rate? Increase?
It's not Neil's, it's Nova's.
That's not Suzanne either.
If I remember, the building official was around a hundred and ten, so it's like fifteen dollar change here. Nothing is significant, but it is an increase over what they've been at for the last five years now.
Building department has had some growing pains, let's say recently. This rate increase will help them get their act together and on board for it. I assume a lot of it's personality.
Yes, we've had, they've had a. Last six months, they've gone through like eight different permit texts. Uh, they come in, they're here for a month, month and a half, two months, they're gone. They just don't seem to keep staying on. I believe the last set that we have now has improved. We have a couple more remotes. We have two more on site. So now we have three on site, two remotes uh, for processing permits.
How long are they under contract for?
There's an evergreen contract as all of them are. We moved from a yearly or a set amount to an evergreen. Um, I expect some improvements also. We are in the final stages of implementation of the software. Which I'm. Hopefully we should have operational act in November slash December. Uh, we've already got the payment process in, we're in the final implementation process. Uh, and as a note on that, we have. Last year, Westlake processed over twelve hundred building permits. This year through August, we've processed a thousand and ninety-two. And I have September, October.
I mean, I get it. We had seventeen COs last week.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I'm gonna reluctantly.
Understood.
Recommend. Approval of this rate increase because I know what it takes to, to hire quality people. I think that's been part of the problem. But I would like you to relay the message back to Nova that this is enough room.
I will relay it to Joe.
Okay. Public comment on this item, city attorney?
No, sir, this is not a public hearing.
Any other comments from? Council on Nova, our building department?
So they stay on track.
I think you answered. So the increase is addressing the turnover, which is a result of the rates for the pay.
Showing, yes, it's going, it's going to personal.
I can't tell them where to spend their money. Certainly hope that's where it's going and, and with that being said.
Okay.
I hope some of the issues we've been seeing subsided. I'll ask for a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two slash twenty-five?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vailleron, seconded by Councilman Martinez. Roll call, Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have. The third addendum to the law enforcement service agreement. City attorney, read by title?
Yes, sir. Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving authorized and proper city council member. To execute a third addendum to the law enforcement service agreeing between the city of Westlake and Rick L. Bradshaw, Sheriff of Palm Beach County, Florida. Providing for conflict severability and effective date.
This is one I'm happy.
Yes.
Great performance, but then you wanna?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, and part of this addendum is the fact that we will be adding another officer beginning as October one. So instead of five officers, uh, we'll have six officers, which will give us more coverage during shifts. We'll have more, two men on, or two individuals on during a shift. Um, we're also proposed within the budget to later potentially in there to add another one. So we're looking at, in our budget and on the process to make sure we have the right amount of coverage for the residents.
Not to mention, I think prior to this, we skated, what, three years without an increase?
Well, the flat, the, the base, yes, the base has not increased over three years, although the new individual is at the new rate. But even with the new blended rate, we're still basically almost at the same as what we've been for last about three years.
Any, any comments or questions from council?
Does the sheriff office? Staff according to population, land?
We make those decisions.
Yeah, I was just wondering. So they don't recommend like one officer per?
There's, there's a rule of thumb, but basically as most cities use as number of calls. As your call volume and your involvement of your officers in what needs to be happening in this, in the city. That's where you come back and say, I need another officer, I need another one. We're approaching the fact now that the officers with our one FTE with, you know, to cover. It's getting the number of residents, households, et cetera, what's going on. We're getting to that point, need to add another one. Later in the year, we'll add another one on top of that, which then would add be basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Lieutenant, basically two. Two officers on, on each shift. So that instead of one each shift where with a cover that floats, we'll have two each shift and possibly even a cover on top of that.
Yeah.
So we will have a lot more coverage.
Expanding.
Correct.
Do we need two to really cover the growth and the?
As, as, and also as commercial comes on, that's where you start coming up, the way you have more calls. And you base, basically on the number of calls that they're handling and what they're doing as to the number of officers you need to cover it.
Makes sense.
Other comments or questions of council?
No comments. If we have more officers, that's better. So.
This is all about.
I make a motion to approve the third addendum to the law enforcement service agreement.
Now, it's second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilman Martinez. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Fantastic. I'm gonna jump right into council comments, starting with Councilwoman Leonard.
I have no comments, mayor.
Councilman Martinez.
I've been working on our city's five K that I proposed last meeting. It's proven to be a little bit more difficult, little overwhelming. But working with a couple of companies, working on getting uh, proposals put together that I can bring to the city. I'm gonna have to talk with Ken about uh, financing and how we're gonna work with that. I'm gonna have to push it back to a later date than I originally anticipated, but that'll help put a more well-rounded event together.
This, this was a turkey trap, right?
Originally, yes, but working with, recalling companies, that's a very popular date. And to add another one on top of it, it's hard for them to put another crew together to manage another one, to manage another one. So I'm gonna pick a later date and it'll just work out better to be able to put it together.
Fantastic.
That's right.
Councilwoman Vailleron.
So I'm very, very happy of our proclamations, very emotional about it. Because our city has to remember.
Of course.
And it's a very, I'm very proud of being part of. And it's a very, I'm very proud of being part of the city and a city council. And that's it. And thank you for today.
Fantastic. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'll just do a follow-up from last month for the Youth, Education Youth Advisory Committee. We are now going to be, it looks like meeting every month instead of quarterly. So that's a good, good thing. So we'll be meeting here. And I know the students, we're going to have student involvement with any, with that, whatever we do as far as special events, where they can get volunteer hours, handing booths or whatever that might be, helping out with the, you know, the trails or handing out water, whatever that might be. We have a handful of volunteers from local schools, especially from high school. So they all, that's going to be good. So.
Can I just go back and just ask the question?
Sure.
We, I had submitted a request for City Government Week, I think, which is in October, and can I recommend it? Maybe your committee, our committee, school board could participate? Did you, did you think about that? Is that on your agenda?
Yeah.
All right, okay. So October, I think is City Government Week. I think it's the third week in October.
Okay.
So I had asked if we could involve some of the students from the local schools with doing maybe proclamations, different activities around city government. So.
We meet again at the end of this month, twenty-ninth. So that'll be our next meeting. I can have, refer by then to bring it up.
Or get it over to you.
Okay.
So I've got a couple things. First, I want to thank Vice Mayor Langowski for moving forward this proclamation. Absolutely incredible. And I'll echo Councilwoman Vayron's sentiments that it's, it's unbelievable, it's uncanny. So thank you again for that. I've got, I've been working on a tentative date for the food truck invasion, which is October seventh. I, I double-checked with Minto. There's no other events, so we're not competing with the, the private amenity. There should be a net zero cost to the city event by charging the food trucks to come, you know, that'll cover all, all the costs we may incur.
Will it take place in that circle?
So I don't want to give this away, but we're going to close down Kingfisher, Ilex.
Kingfish from?
Close down Kingfisher.
From Town Center Parkway north to Town Center.
Town Center Parkway south.
Okay.
We'll still have people park in the field where Fourth Fest was.
Walk over it.
But right there at the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Close the entire road down because that doesn't obstruct the rest of the city. Line the food trucks up, that whole thing, which is wide of it. I did the math. It was like sixty food trucks. We could get there.
Really?
Lot.
Okay.
Wow.
And then, you know, that takes care of handicap parking and takes care of everything.
And they'll pay a fee?
I was.
Food trucks will pay a fee. The fee will offset any, um, costs from the market.
Have to get fire people there too.
Absolutely. Hundred percent.
Some incidents will happen.
Oh, no, we'll, we'll of course have our deputies there and we'll, we'll fire. The date we're, we're looking at is October seventh, if everybody's cool with that. I'll keep up on it.
Yeah, that's a good. It's what time?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
It's to be determined. We're thinking about, we're thinking about calling it Westlake Beats and Eats and have a DJ come.
Oh, that's nice.
On there.
Very nice.
Yeah. Second thing is our Arts and Public Places Committee. We're getting close to having to have some involvement with them because we've got commercial coming online. And I would kind of like to nominate myself to be the liaison with that committee, if anybody has any injunctions or.
Can you just elaborate a little bit about what that?
Sure. So we have an Arts and Public Places ordinance, and we have an Arts and Public Places Committee. Basically, Neilson can, can help with the details, but a percentage of every single commercial project basically goes into, to an account to beautify our city. And we have.
Well, there's actually two options.
Two options.
Two options.
So they can either choose art themselves, but it has to still get submitted and go through the committee.
Correct.
And then eventually in front of us for approval. The committee makes a recommendation to us whether we should allow them to put that statue that they want in front of their property, or doesn't have to be a statue. The building itself could be art. There's many, many options. Now, if they opt out of doing their own art, percentage of their, their cost goes into a fund, and then the committee decides where that art's going to go and what it's going to be, come in front of us for approval. So being is how we've got some commercial that will fall into the Arts and Public Places Ordinance coming up hopefully soon. I'd like to kind of spearhead that committee and make sure they've got great leadership going forward. So whether you agree or is cool with that?
Sounds good.
That's cool. Sounds good.
City Attorney, we would have a liaison section of the ordinance. Does that need to be revised?
No, ma'am. If there's a consensus of the council, we can do that on a case by case basis.
Lastly, I just really, really want to reiterate my thanks for your support in dropping that mileage rate. I know it doesn't seem like much, but like I said, it's more of a symbolic, symbolic move where everything around us is going up, going the other direction. And I think, I think it really shows our residents' interests. Being as responsible, extremely responsible with their tax dollars. Thank you for your support. All of our taxes. Um. Sure. Let's move forward to, uh. I'm going to erase it. We can hear you if you'd like to comment. I'll open it up to public comment.
I think it's the.
Let's go to report staff. County Fire Rescue. Chief, what do we got?
Good evening. Philip Polvery, District Chief, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. Good to see you all again. I know I wasn't at the last meeting. So we went over our turnout times. Turnout times are good. We ran twenty-five calls last month. Six and a half minutes is our average response time, so we're doing good there. One thing I wanted to bring up to your attention is an achievement that Palm Beach County Fire Rescue reached for the first time in their history. Nearly forty years, we were able to achieve a, be rated as a Class One Fire Department through the ISO organization. This is actually a very big deal for fire departments. Out of roughly forty thousand departments throughout the country, we're now in the top point zero one percent of departments. So it really is a huge. And, and it's a testament to the, the men and women we have out on the street. They're the ones that pretty much earn this score for us. It has to do with their training hours, the equipment and the response times. And the good thing for the, the residents is within a five mile radius of a fire station, a lot of times insurances give a discount when a, a department has a Class One rating. So, so there is a possibility some people will see that. I personally don't know how they work that all out, so that's an insurance thing, but it is a possibility with, with some insurance companies. So it, it's a great deal.
There we go.
That's it. We're working for you.
Yeah.
But that's all I have.
As always, Chief, thank you so much. Do we have any questions for the chief? Thank you so, so kindly.
Thank you.
We'll skip to Ken. Mr. City Manager, you have a report?
Yes. Couple items. In my weekly report, I did meet last week with the Pastors of Christ Fellowship. I extended invitation, but they happen to be on vacation this week. So, but they will be coming to the next meeting. They also would like to meet with each one of you to get some input from how they can come alongside and assist the community. They're looking to be fully integrated within the city of Westlake, helping with events, et cetera, et cetera. So they're a young couple. They're probably in their mid thirties, maybe. To me, they're kids again. But Jonathan and I believe his wife's name is Natalie. But I told them they'll reach out to Zoe to set up meetings with each one of you to get some individual time and get to meet them and walk through. The facility is coming along well. It's going to be a very nice facility. They will be coming back on the facility. They realized that they need some wayfinding signs in their parking lot so people can find, you know, the kids area, different parking lot A, parking lot B type scenario. That was not in their original master sign plan, but they will be coming in for an amendment to their sign plan probably in October or November. Whether they have those up by the time they're open isn't critical, but they will be wanting to do that. So they will be coming back for that. The other thing I have is in October, I'd like to have a workshop with the council. Kind of going over, I know a couple years ago, we kind of did reviews, but as a contract city, the reviews are kind of different. So what I'd like to do in October, since it's a brand new council, is have a workshop to look at goals, vision, to make sure that myself and the rest of the administration of staff is on track with where we want to go. And then later in the year, we'll evaluate how we're doing on getting to those goals and objectives. So we'll go from there.
Okay.
You know, and, and it is different because technically we don't have any employees per se. It's contract, so it's more of a goals and objectives. Are we meeting their contract goals and objectives? And I think that's about.
Should we set a date now for that?
We can.
Since we won't see each other before then, let's.
Well, we're going to see, we'll see everybody on the nineteenth for this second budget.
Yeah.
We can pick a dates. But again, Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Is Tuesday is the best, best day for y'all?
Yeah.
Monday or Tuesdays? Okay, so possibly look at maybe the third Tuesday of the month.
Let's tentatively do that, and then we'll reaffirm it up at the, at the second budget meeting.
Okay.
Deal.
So eighteenth?
Looking at third, third Tuesday of, of, yes.
Okay.
We'll confirm it at the sixteenth meeting.
Okay. Nineteenth. Nineteenth?
Tonight, with the big meeting.
Excellent. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, other than the fact it's always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, sir. Public comments.
Mayor, receive no previous comment cards. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hands. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hands. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes. We have a virtual comment from Mrs. Tapiero. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Yes, this is Anna Tapiero Rodriguez, five nine nine one, Whipple Circle, Westlake. Just wanted to thank the mayor for always being sensitive to all our requests, our needs, and just want to thank the council. And I appreciate your, your effort with the taxes and look forward to next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tapiero.
If there are any other virtual callers that wish to make a comment, please state your name and address. If your call has been muted, please press star six. We have no comments, Mayor.
There being no further comments, I will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-three PM. Thank you all.
Please, Chief.